Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Town of Andover Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting for Monday, March 10th. It is seven o'clock and we're going to start with the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're going to move on to Item Two, Public Speak. We're going to start with Diane Grunier.
Good. I hope you can hear me?
We can.
Perfect. A few things that I wanted to say tonight. One, I'm delighted to see so many people zooming into tonight's meeting. We don't always have this much company and some people that I haven't heard or seen for in a long time. So that's good to see everybody. One of the things I wanted to ask is at some time in the near future, doesn't have to be tonight, can we get an update on the Andover's Finest? That program has been in place for a couple of years. Originally, it was going to be every quarter or so. I believe we've only done it once and it's been a long time. So I'd like to hear an update. I hope that hasn't fallen through the cracks and we're not doing it anymore. So if we could get an update on that, I'd appreciate it. The other thing is, we had some windy weather this week and put our work, Public Works Department to the test. I think they did a great job. Yippee. Thank you, guys. I did notice before the storm that there's been a lot of, well, there's been a lot of tree cutting activity the last couple of years. Particularly, I noticed on Shoddy Mill, there's been a lot down by the dump, transfer station, excuse me. There's also been a lot on Burnet Brook Road, significant tree cutting over there. And I was wondering, is there a schedule, where are they going to be next, so that people would know when they're coming to take down the trees in their neighborhood? And if that could be posted someplace, so people would know that where the guys are, what they're doing, and the fact that they are doing something. So I would like to see that. And the other thing, and I'm sorry that Eric's not on here today. Before every meeting in Board of Selectmen, I generally go to most of the meetings, I check the calendar, where they have the agenda, and attached to that is the Administrator's Report. And I'm always surprised at how much stuff the town administrator handles. It's a wide variety of things. I think he does an excellent job. And I applaud him, and I just want to make it known publicly that what he does is recognized. And I don't think that most people in town know all the things that he does. And again, that report, the Administrator's Report, is very informative. As you probably all know, that I'm pretty much homebound. I don't get out a lot. But I do find that's a great way of staying in touch with all the things that are happening in our community. And like I said, I find it very helpful. So I thank you for that. And like I say, those other items, if at some point in town, you can, in time, you can give us an update on those things. I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wally Barton.
Nothing at this time, Jeff. Thank you.
Yep. Kimberly Person.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Liz Lowkach.
Thanks. I'm all set for now.
Okay. Janine Gagnon.
All set. Thank you.
Chris, I'm sorry, Kathy and Mike Plazey.
Nothing, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, I don't have a last name for.
That's fine. It's Chris Bernard.
Chris Bernard.
And nothing right now. Thanks.
Okay. Rachel Bowman.
I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Stephen King.
At the moment, currently speechless.
Louise Goodwin.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Jerry Kremay.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Valerie Bruno.
All set. Thank you.
Joanne Ebert.
All set right now. Thank you.
Kathleen, no last name.
DeRozers. All set. Thank you.
Bob Hamburger.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Tess Graus.
I'm all set. Thank you, Jeff.
Leanne Hutchinson.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I have a phone number that ends in 6988. Okay. I have a phone number that is 2345, and I believe that's Attorney, Town Attorney O'Brien. Okay. 5475 is Leanne Hutchinson, and a phone number that ends in 6682.
That's Adrian Mandeville.
Adrian.
And I just have a couple of questions I'd like to ask the board to address prior to the meeting on Thursday regarding the school solar project. I've gone through the documents that were available on the school website. Unfortunately, I don't see anything further. So one of my concerns is, I was on the original school roof project, and we put in for a 50-year warranty for that roof. It was an actual additional 10% cost to the project. In the minute-
Recording in progress.
Hang on, sorry. Unfortunately, I don't see any documents addressing how that's going to be taken care of, because the minute you put the solar on the roof, you're going to throw away a 50-year warranty. And although the solar companies say that they're going to, you know, they'll take care of any damages, you're talking about a new company that's barely been around, and they're going to be able to cover a $500,000 worth. There should be some sort of bond or something put in place to address this. That would be longstanding for the life of the project. I think my other concern is that by doing this project through the school, instead of through the town, if you look at the specifications of the project, it's going to generate about 1.5 times what they're actually trying to estimate, based on the roof pitch and size of the system. I know this because I've designed a bunch of these. And where's that all that extra electricity going to go? It could be going to offset the Public Works Department and the community center in the town fall, but because this is being done for the school, you won't have the option of doing that. It's a town building. It should have been a town project from day one, which I brought up when I was on the school board. By doing it this way, you're shortening the town. The other concern I have is that there's no specifications for the installations on the roof. Most importantly, you have a million-dollar project, and I don't see competitive bids anywhere, which is part of the requirement for any town project, school or otherwise. So just, there seems to be some missing things in there. Thank you.
Did I miss anyone? Roberta Darty.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Is there, once again? Elaine Buchard. Public speak. Okay.
Hi, sorry. I lost track of time. I apologize. No, I'm just going to be listening tonight. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Is there anyone that I missed? Bob Hamburger, did I miss you?
No, I spoke already. Thank you. Nothing to add.
Okay. All right. If I didn't miss anyone, if I missed anyone, please come off mute quickly and then you can speak, or we're going to move on. Okay. We're going to go to Item Three, Additions and Changes to the Agenda. Yeah, Jeff, I'd like to add under New Business, 14G, discussion on solar, I'm not solar, it's discussion on EV, EV station at the Town Hall, EV charging station. Okay. Anything else? It might be under Old Business, but I'd like to try to discuss the blight and what's been, what's been going on with blight. I know Eric is not here, so we may want to continue that to the next meeting. So. Do we, we have a blight section in the packet, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned about that Long Hill property. I mean, we can discuss it, and that's, that's not a big deal. So do that under 13, it's actually there, 13B.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else, anyone else? All right. Let me make a motion that we add 14E, EV charging station discussion to the agenda. Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so as everybody knows, Eric is not, he's on vacation. That is planned. So we're going to just move through this. Item Four is Board and Commission Presentations. I did not see any in the packet when I received it. Anyone else have anything on there? They want to talk about any of the other boards and commissions? Okay. Item Five, Appointments and Resignations. I was made, not made aware of any appointments or resignations that we needed to consider at this meeting? Okay. Item Six, Town Administrator Report in our packet under pages. Three and four, and does anyone want me to share my screen on these things? Doesn't make any sense. I mean, some of the stuff I will, but well, let's just go through Eric's. I'll go through it. Town Hall Operations, Cleaning of the Building is in good shape. Willie and Susan are doing a great job. I greatly appreciate the effort that those two put in to keep the Town Hall and the buildings clean. So again, Eric's on vacation. He's returning the 19th. He left a set of items to sit there and deal with while he's on vacation. So I will be dealing with Chris in the Finance Office on a few items and make myself available for what needs to get out while Eric's away. He has some items. They're all in the agenda. He wants to receive authorization from the Board to expend money for the Bridge and Culvert Fund and the Bunker Hill Bridge Fund to pay for initial project costs as we get reimbursed. That's something we have to discuss related to federal and state reimbursements on that project. He wants us to authorize Tess Graus from the Senior Center to submit a grant for a new senior transportation vehicle. It'll be a direct replacement of the van that we're having some issues with. It does require a 20% grant match for the town, but something we should vote on. I believe it's under, it is under-
11, I mean, 14.
Well, New Business. Okay. All right. The other part he put in our packet, information regarding the grant list, the state is changing the way that motor vehicles are valued, doing a stepped-down depreciation from the initial retail value of a car that we purchased, going down by 5% multiple years. So there's two opportunities for the set of the grant list and how we deal with them. So he's asking us to make a decision. One is a larger step down and one is a smaller step down. So we just need to vote on that. We also need to talk about the RAM budget, which is also in our, our packet. We should vote on that to move that forward to the Board of Finance. And he's also requesting that we vote on and give approval for the $20,000 to authorize for the fire commission and the replacement of the counters and the cabinets in the fire department. Other than that, he's sitting there going through, and I'll just, for the benefit of the community, if they don't have access to the packet, the kitchen in the community center is largely done. He's got some things that he wants to fix when he gets back there. There's some congressional appropriations that we were promised, that it doesn't appear that we're going to be receiving because of the budget hold and where they're at federally in Washington. So the VoIP phone has been installed at the community center for the benefit of the director. The acoustic panels have all gone up in the community room and in the community center. The town clerks, he has nothing to report. We have some items on the agenda to discuss related to that. Town Assessor's Office, that he wants to talk about the grand list related to that. Finance office is in the middle of the audit. ZBO has the report in our packet. Town Engineer, ZBA application for a pavilion at Veterans Park, pending. Scott and Ann can speak to that. If you have any information on that, would you like to add to that part?
The pavilion is within the 50-foot sack back on, from the road, Riverside Drive, and there's no other place to put it. This is one time that there really has a, some deal that needs to go through. So we're just going to go to ZBA and talk to them about it.
Okay.
But there's only one place to put it. It's only, you know, it's within five or six feet of where it's supposed to be. And there's one place to put it on that high mountain there. Going to go to ZBA and ask them for the, for approval, right?
Okay. Public Works, there's a report in the packet at the back. Bunker Hill Bridge Closure, expected April 1st. That is something that we need to get with Eric and make sure that he gets that information communicated out to the people who are going to be impacted by that closure. The Long Hill Bridge design is, is in process and has sign-off on the 30% design phase. Close Jensen has been acquired by BBH, so there's going to be some changes to the engineering side of that. So. NLJ has done the borings on the Bizzola Ridge Bridge or the Bizzola Road Culvert on Lake Road. So that is moving forward. Safety Committee, ongoing meetings, capital improvements, the packets of three quotes for cabinetry, and the replacement of countertops. Okay. Oops, I'm sorry, Marcy. Apologize for not getting to you. Okay. Any questions or anything that you guys want to address related to the Town Administrator's Report or anything we need to address with him when he gets back? No, I'd just like to echo Diane Grunier's comments. The Public Works had a huge mess to clean up on Long Hill and Bear Swamp, and they were working on it all day today. Two large pine trees and, you know, they, they knocked it out today, and you can't even really tell, except for the guardrail damage, that there was a major incident there. So kudos to them for, for the hard work that they put in today. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Item Seven, Discussion and Possible Action on a Petition Filed February 19th for Special Election to Fill Board of Selectmen Vacancy. That petition is in our packet. Those petitions, they were filed. I'm extremely happy that our, our community could file petitions because that was an issue related to one of the items in our- Charter Revision. Everybody was complaining about filing petitions, but it didn't seem to matter. Petitions got done. Those petitions were, and I'll sit there and I'll tell you what. Let's, let's sit there and do this. One second. Don't want to do that. Try to do this easily. So let's see what we can do. Okay, so just so everybody can see, this, these were the types of petitions that were collected. All the signatures were verified by the Assistant Town Clerk. Not all of them were approved. And just as a question, is Carol Lee on the call? Okay. Okay, so- Jeff, I believe she is. Just give her a minute to answer. Yeah, no problem. I mean, I don't have anything right now, but I did ask her to be on the call this afternoon when I spoke to her this morning. So anyway, this is the statute for everyone to sit there and see related to what the petitions were filed against. So this statute, 922, sits there. And so let's explain to everybody what was going on when this was initially done and the vacancy became available August 19th. So Paula resigned. The process that everyone believed we were, we were going to be following, or we would follow, and we had followed in the past, was related to Section 208 of the Charter. The Charter sits there and gives each board their opportunity to sit there and appoint a candidate or a replacement to an individual that resigned. At that point in time, right around that same time, we had three different resignations from the three major boards within the town. We had a resignation from the Board of Education, a resignation from the Board of Finance, and a resignation from the Board of Selectmen. So there were three different positions available. All of the other boards, according to our charter, have 60 days to fill a position, or the appointment of that position comes to the Board of Selectmen to fill. But basically with our charter and the home rule that it relates to, the Board of Selectmen did not, or the town, did not put a timeline on the Board of Selectmen. So that is how it was progressed and went through the process. So in the past, the Board of Selectmen has, has come to a reasonable conclusion. I mean, the last time this happened was when, when in 2019, Paula was appointed to the board. That appointment was based upon the compromise from the Democrats on the committee, which were Eric Anderson, Jeff McGuire, and Scott Person, to sit there and make Eric Anderson the Town Administrator. And for doing that, the compromise that was agreed upon was that we would appoint a Republican and to give the Republicans a majority on the board. And the only request from our end, from Scott and I, was to make it, appoint a female, so that we had some female representation on the board. So that's what happened in 2019. At that point in time, Jeff Murray was on the board, and so was Adrian Mandeville. And Paula was the third Republican that was put on our board and has a great appointment. So now we're in this situation where we have, we have not been able to come to an agreement, and we now have a petition that's being filed under this statute, 922. 922. I will tell you, Carol did not know that this, this statute was available at the time of Paula's resignation. The town attorney did not know that this statute was available at the time of Paula's resignation, because everybody was under the impression we were going to deal with the charter and how the charter sits there and equates. Now we're into an extended period of time, which I apologize, related to not appointing, but this is where we're at. We're dealing with it. But this statute, according to my reading of this, had many different things that were required to sit there and be done in a timely fashion to basically be able to comply with this statute. We did not do any of them. And now we're at a point where we're, we're sitting there and cherry picking different options related to this. So I'm just saying to you that this is the statute that's been selected related to the petition. I'm just telling you that I don't believe that this statute applies. That's not to sit there and say that there's not a statute that applies for a given election, just not this statute. So that's my opinion. And so I realize that my friends that have done this are, they're not going to agree with that. So I'm laying it out there for the community and for everybody else to understand, here's the statute. It's not a long statute. Please read it. Please understand what the statute says. And, you know, we need to sit there and make some, some decisions to make this process fair. So anybody got any questions about the statute or want to talk about the statute in any way? Well, Jeff, the statute, I mean, when we appointed Paula, the statute would have came into play, because if the Town of Andover and the citizens in town did not like our appointment, this statute does apply. So they could, they could have petitioned for a special election. But the whole point is, we haven't appointed any. So this whole statute, the way you're reading, you're reading, you're reading it, doesn't apply. Jeff, if we haven't appointed anybody, it says there's a vacancy and the town can petition, and that's what we, that's what I signed the petition and other people have too. So barring, barring, barring a judge and a injunction, this election is going to, is going to stay and it's going to, it's going to progress. Okay, so I'll, I'll take that. I got it. So now let's talk about the fairness of this election. All right. So let's talk about the process that we're now in. So this is the next section. Section Eight, Discuss Possible Action on Notice, February 20th, by the Assistant Town Clerk, scheduling special election scheduled for April 11th, 2025, to fill the Board of Selectmen vacancy. So as you know, and I did not send this to the town clerk, so, you know, I will, I didn't send it back to the Assistant Town Clerk. I did not send it back to Carol. When I received the notice, I sent an email out to all the members stating that we just needed to understand the ground rules for this election, and that I requested that no notices be put out into the public so that we could have come to a resolution. If we're going to have an election, let's do it right and sit there and be appropriate. So you know, I emailed you, Jeff Murray, when the notice came out that we're having an election. I said, what's the process? And you told, your response to me in the email was that you were not engaged in this and it was, it was outside of you, right? So legally, you're not the responsible party. I get it. Okay. Yeah, Jeff, I was actually in Florida for the week that this petition was circulated. So Well, you signed it. I got back and signed it on the last day before it was filed. Okay. When I, that, that morning when I got back, I signed one of the petitions. Correct. Understood. And, and, but I was more interested in when I get a special notice from the town Assistant Town Clerk. And, and just so we're aware, and let's all be clear, the Assistant Town Clerk is still taking all of her instruction and direction from Carol Lee, and who has all the experience in dealing with the Secretary of State and everything else. So just to be clear, this is where the direction is coming from and what's being done. And, and just understanding that this is, this has nothing to do with the Assistant Town Clerk. So I want everybody to be clear. Jeff, that's not necessarily true, because Carol Lee resigned on January 1st, and she's been in an advisory role to her. But Brittany now is the acting town clerk as the assistant. So that is not true. Okay. Okay. All right. I will, I will keep that understanding. So so I went in today to sit there and ask the town clerk's office, what is the process for the election? And I spoke to Carol, and there was on the board, there was something on the wall related to the town clerk. And this is, this is the, this is the notice that's in the paper. So Interested in Filling Board Vacancies, Any Andover Elector Interested in Being Coming a Candidate on the April 11th Special Election Ballot for the Board of Selectmen Vacancy Should Call the- For the Board of Selectmen vacancy should call the Secretary of State's office at eight six oh five oh nine one hundred. Voting will take place Friday, April eleventh from six AM, six AM to eight PM in the community room of the town hall. So I called that number this morning because this was the first day that we were available to call. I got the front desk of the Secretary of State's office. I got a a voicemail for a Taffy Womack. Sorry, I'm gonna, I gotta look that one up. One second. And and I did not get a return phone call. So I'm just letting you know that that is what was provided. So I I went in and I spoke to Carol about this. And Taffy Womack, yes. I went in to speak to Carol about this and Carol then sat there and directed the Assistant Town Clerk, or the Acting Town Clerk, however, to make some changes to the notice that was going up on the board. And in the meantime, Carol provided us, provided me some information and to be really, to be candid, I had the town attorney. Who should have been engaged in this from the beginning because in my mind, this is an extremely complex matter.
Jeff, let me interrupt for a second. The discussion with the town attorney, did you CC the rest of the board with these discussions because you should have?
No, I I called him.
Well, did you email them and include the rest of the board for the discussions?
I didn't. And all I did was call him, Jeff, and say, can you please talk to Carol?
Well, did you ask for opinion on this statute?
I have not asked for an opinion.
Okay, I'm just I'm just asking, when we, when you engage the town attorney, you should include the rest of the board of selectmen in that discussion?
I will. I will make that. I will put that in my information bank. But yes, I called him and I was speaking to him directly. So, you know, do I, do I want to ask him for an opinion? Sure, I would love to, but let's talk.
Just to cover us for FOI rules, we should, everything should be covered in writing an email and then should cover the rest of the board of selectmen.
I I'm sure all the conversations are included in that. So the answer is, the answer is.
All my, all my discussions with you have been over email. And so if anybody wants to have a why any of our discussions, they can certainly do that.
So when we had our phone call, that was all in. I mean, we have conversation over solar panels. Was that, is that, that's what we did. We, that's how it should work. That's how this whole thing should work. We should talk and communicate and make a decision. Anyway, I just, Jeff, I just want to put this out there so the public understands the whole transaction and what's up.
I'm just, I'm just correcting you on a few things. That's all.
Yeah, okay, I got you. So that's the notice that's in the paper. That notice has now been changed to direct phone calls to a Taffy Womack at the Secretary of State's office. To allow us to fill a vacancy. So the other information that Carol provided this morning was that there was an attorney. Attorney. Mister Mister Bernie Leo, Leo. And. That attorney was at the Secretary of State's office and there was some information that, you know. He provided to to Carol in in dealing with the petition and how the petition should be dealt with. So again, Jeff, I had the town attorney today contact Mr. Lou to understand what the criteria was for this. And I sat there and. And and if you want, you can, you can have Attorney O'Brien talk. I'll I'll sit there and I'll gladly let him talk.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned that there's some discussions going on that is not including the whole Board of Selectmen.
Well, is it?
It just, it just kind of, it just kind of smells like there's some kind of.
Oh, 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 my goodness, something smelling and you're gonna sit there and say, the chief executive of the town, talking to the town attorney. And when none of this information was made public or allowed to be public so that we could have a fair and free election. Because that's what we should all be in toward.
I mean, I mean, not to interrupt you, but I mean, this is the most fair and free prog. This is the most fair and free process that we could actually ever hope for.
Okay, you wanna?
I mean, everybody, I mean, if if and if you're, if you're trying. No, 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 Jeff, I just want to, can I finish, please?
Sure.
I would just like to, you know, say that, you know, I I could see Kimberly Person is on. I know she was a petitioning candidate in the last election. And discussing it with her, the process was extremely easy. It was a minimal amount of signatures. If anybody in this town wants to get on the ballot for the selectmen, they're more than welcome to go on.
Okay.
This is not a closed election or is not some kind of conspiracy. It's, 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 it's a free, open election and it's gonna be, anybody can run. And the town, the public, anybody that's a registered voter can decide who this person is gonna be.
Okay.
I'm with you. And if that's the case, if that's the case.
I'm good.
There's no, there's no issue whatsoever. And if you want to talk to Kim, Kim is on this meeting. If you want to talk.
I I wanna, I mean, if we did this by our charter and we had right timing, no problem. I here's what we, here's what was received today. This was given, provided by Carol to the town attorney. And this is, this is the agenda. This is basically the opinion and the direction I must understanding that we dealt with, that this group dealt with this entire thing. And if you look at this, like, I don't understand the dates and how they all come into play. But basically, this is, this is what we're trying to deal with. There's political party and party rules related to the Republican Party because this is supposed to be a Republican candidate. You're supposed to do the endorsement. And so so that's all by March sixth. The ballot, the printing of absentee ballots happens on March sixth. Today's the tenth, Jeff. So you tell me how this is free and inaccurate. That's that's Secretary of State's filing provided by Carol Lee to the town attorney today.
That's, that's, I would rather see, I'd, can can we get, can we get Carol Lee or the Assistant Town Clerk on here to clarify this because?
I asked Carol to be on, so and I believe she joined.
Yep, she is on.
Carol, you're more than welcome to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because you couldn't hear me on my phone. I was screaming, yes.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. I don't know what was the matter with it. Um, so are you talking about the election calendar that Dennis asked me to fax over to me?
Correct, yeah.
Unfortunately, I do not have that sitting in front of me. So I do not have any of the dates. The only one that I specifically remember. Is that everyone, anyone who would like to petition to be on the ballot has until March twenty-eighth.
Okay.
We don't have absentee ballots ready at this point in time. You can talk with Wally about that, but the new tabulators are coming in. So we are going to be doing paper ballots. So anyone who is a write-in candidate. Someone would write, they would have to get out there, get their petitions in. Become a write-in candidate and then their name would be written in on those ballots.
A write-in candidate?
Correct.
So when you, you. So you're telling me that the ballots would be produced, there would be one name on it, the Republican Republican endorsed candidate Carol Lee. That would be the only name on the ballot and anyone else that wanted to run would have to go in as a write-in ballot.
Correct.
Anybody here on this board think that's fair? Just asking. Because none of this was shared with them.
If they're a candidate, they're a candidate. If they're a candidate, they're a candidate.
Okay. All right, um, just because I'm not a lawyer, I read these things. I read stuff for work. I understand enough of it. I, you know.
And can I just add one thing?
Sure.
There were petitioning candidates before, Jeff, and you know that very well. The first time you were on the ballot. As on the Democratic ticket. Where it was our Republican. And the two petitioning candidates won for first selectman. And Board of Selectmen. So. Yes, petitioning candidates. It can be very fair. And we learn that from experience.
I I don't disagree, Carol, if it's done correctly. And and what I'm trying to get at, I'm trying to get at, I'm just basically dealing with the the issues. I may not believe that the way that we did this and according to statutes is accurate. But I sit there and I'm going, okay, if we're gonna do it, what is the rules? What is the process? Explain it. Carol, I walked into your office today and I asked you what the process was. And you told me just to call the Secretary of State's office. That's not free and fair. That's not a setting is up for competition.
Exactly what I told you was, because I am a candidate on that ballot. I am totally hands off with advising any candidate as to how many signatures they need or the process. I said that the correct way is to call the Secretary of State's office. Then it can never be said. That I advise someone incorrectly. I would never do that. But I'm a candidate, so I'm in a different position with the advice. While you were standing there, I dialed the Secretary of State's office. I had no problem getting Heather, who answered the phone, to answer every single one of my questions because I said. I have someone here who's been trying to get on as a write-in candidate. And has been telling me that they can't get through to anybody at the Secretary of State offers, office or get any of their questions answered. She answered every single one of the questions, didn't she?
She sat there and said, how many signatures we potentially needed because you were, you were speaking to her. And yes, Carol, you do have the relationships in with the department. My question to you, and I'll just ask this really, what's write-in mean to the public? Like, what does it mean? Because the way I I take write-in is I need to just write in the name.
You write the person's name, just like if you're at the Democratic or the Republican caucus and they're passing paper ballots. You write the name of your candidate that you would like.
Okay, but that person's name is not on the ballot.
Correct, but a list of write-in candidates is available.
Okay, all right. What, you know. Okay, so this is what was provided. What what I would like to do is I would just like to sit there and have Attorney O'Brien. Speak to the differences between nine twenty-two and I believe it's nine one sixty-four. So if we are going down this road, we understand what is, what should be done and shouldn't be done legally. If anyone, does anyone disapprove of that?
I, I don't see what is wrong with this nine two two two. It seems to me that we have followed that exactly and we are ready now to have the special election.
Okay, so so I'll ask you. And so in the second line of the of this. It sits there and says, when a vacancy incurs in the office of the first selectman or in the office of the selectman. It shall be filled within thirty days after the date of its occurrence by the remaining members of the Board of Selectmen. Said members may appoint one of themselves to fill a vacancy, blah, 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 right? But, you know.
Well, no, 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 let's not go blah, 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 because it says the office of first selectman.
Correct, or selectmen. So this office of first selectmen, if they so desire, and shall then fill the ensuing vacancy in the office of selectmen as herein provided. In such a vacancy in the office. It is not filled within thirty days. It goes through a process. Within ten days after that, the town clerk, I mean, Jeff, if we had followed this, right? Like, listen, if we had followed the statute from the beginning. Then the elected Republican officials within this town, because we didn't get to a filling, we couldn't agree on this, would have filled this vacancy. That's what this says.
No, it doesn't, Jeff. It doesn't.
It does.
It does not.
Okay, so if I read this vacancy in the office first, or if it is not filled within thirty days. After the day of its occurrence, the town clerk shall within ten days here thereafter. Carol, did you do that? Did you notify anyone?
Yes, I do. With every single board and commission, when there is a vacancy, I notify.
No, 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 Carol, I understand. I understand you notified us of vacancies. I have the emails. I I I put them all together. And I'm a hundred percent with you.
Yes, Jeff, and not to interrupt, Jeff, but we 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 got the vacancy notice and we did endorse three candidates.
So I do send out letters to both town committee chairs advising them of the vacancy. Along with a copy of the letter of resignation. And then a notice is sent in to the River East to notify the general public. Then notices are placed on the bulletin board and all doors of the town hall.
No, I'm 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 with you. I agree one hundred percent. You do that. That's not what I'm asking and that's not what I'm reading here. I'm I'm saying that we failed to fill the seat within, this is what this statute says. We failed to fill the seat within thirty days. The the town clerk's office, within ten days thereafter, shall notify the elective town officers enrolled in the same political party as the first selectman. Or selectmen, as the case may be, who vacated the office or all elective town officers, you know. If such first selectman or selectman who vacated the office was not enrolled with a with a political party. And it shall be filled by such elective town officers within sixty days after its occurrence. So what that's saying is if the town, if this Board of Selectmen doesn't fill this, then it goes to all the elected officials within the town. That's what this is saying to me pretty, pretty simply. And and I'm not going. So. Now it goes through the process and it sits there and and the Republicans, because this would have been a Republican seat, Jeff. You guys would have all the elected officials. So everybody in town that had gone through a campaign and got voted on by residents. Would sit there and would be a, you would have a caucus and you would sit there and say, who should fill this seat? That's what this statute says. Then it sits there and says, if it gets filled and people don't like it.
I I mean, I mean, Jeff, this says the term town officers is using the section that includes state representative of town officials. It's about town birds. It says that right out. Come on, Jeff.
What are you talking about?
Right on the bottom.
Well, where did we miss it? Because I'm still reading, so.
This is the term town officers.
Yeah, I mean, and it also sits there and says at the bottom that we have town charters in the back section, the next page, a town.
I mean, this, let's just, let's just back up a minute for it. The spirit of this, like, our town charter covers every vacancy. We know that there's a vacancy on the Board of Finance or there's a board vacancy on the Board of Education. If those aren't filled within the time we matter, the Board of Selectmen can can fill those seats. There's a reason why that is, the Board of Selectmen vacancy is not in the in this town charter because it is covered under the state statute.
Oh, my God, please.
We have, yes, it's it's true.
No one in our town has ever put a state statute in our charter ever like that.
No, because this is not in our charter because the state statute covers.
Yes, yes. Okay, let's have the town attorney come on because I'd rather listen to him talk than.
I mean, I mean, Jeff, Jeff, at this point. Anything, anything other than a judge and an injunction is gonna stop this election. As a Board of Selectmen, we can't stop this election. The town attorney can't stop this election. It's gonna happen. If you want to, no, no, Jeff, if if you want to stop this election. You want to hire an attorney to go to a municipal court and file an injunction against this election, then let's do that.
So you're telling me that what you're doing here is fair?
Yes, it's very.
No, this is terribly, this is terribly.
Completely fair.
It is fair.
It's fair and open.
You are not allowing any resident that would like to run.
Of course.
Opportunity to do it because because all you're doing, you see, you're minimizing the fact that, let's look at an election. What Carol said before about Jay and Bob, which is where we're going to, right? Jay and Bob. So so what what they were sitting there, sorry, I gotta let some people in. So what you're dealing with is you're dealing with a write-in. That that means that person's name is not getting on the ballot. So what opportunity they have, when Jay and Bob did it, they did it within our charter. They did it within the Secretary of State's time. So their names got printed on the ballot.
So so Jeff, let me just ask a question.
Yeah.
Let's just say that RTC nominated another candidate. Carol Lee was a write-in.
Yeah.
Do you think Carol Lee would get elected?
It doesn't matter. I don't know who will win. I don't know who will win. Maybe a qualified candidate will be out there to sit there and do it.
I just want to ask that question because in the paper, you've been quoted to say, if Carol Lee ran for the seat, she would get overwhelmingly elected. If Carol Lee was a write-in candidate, would she get elected?
I don't think she would get elected if somebody else's name was on the ballot and people showed up. Because her name wouldn't be on the ballot. So you have to get, listen, you're you're talking about a situation where it's either fair or not fair. And that's where I'm coming from with related.
It's an election.
Because no one, no one has given fair of this.
Jeff, anybody can vote for whoever they want.
I agree.
And whoever they want. It's it's completely fair and transparent.
The one I'm hearing is that, I think what she's, Carol's been saying is that you're gonna have a list. Right there, when you go in to vote, you'll have a list of all the possible people that have put their names in. So people will see every single person that had petitioned. Whether it be one or twenty, and then they can write down the person they want to get in. But they will see all the names and they can choose from those names. And that is fair.
That's not, that's not, this is not even close to being fair. So, okay. Attorney O'Brien, quickly, quickly, if you can, sir. You got on mute, Dennis. Dennis, what phone number are you? Two, four, five, six? Wow, a lot more people are showing up. Okay. Let me find that out. Info. Two, four, three, five. Attorney O'Brien, if you can sit there and hear me, you know, you can sit there and come on. But anyway, I don't want to really hold up everybody here, and at some point in time, Dennis will come on. Let's, uh. Let's.
Jeff, let's make one thing clear, the attorney's opinion is an opinion.
Understood.
And it doesn't overrule the process. And what I said before, if anybody would like to stop this election, including you,
Yeah.
you can, you can, you can hire an attorney and petition the court to issue an injunction if we have followed this. If I and anybody else in this town has done something that's inappropriate, and a judge would rule, a judge would rule, that's, that's.
I understand, Jeff, what you mean by, when you say we, I do get that, so understood, I'm, I'm with you.
I mean, I signed the petition, I'm a sign.
I know, we, I got it. So here was also, just so everybody can be aware, and you know, there's a lot of, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to this, and I'm sure that the town attorney will figure out his computer issues later. So I just wanted to also go over the timing of everything, just so everybody has this in front of them. So all the members of the public, please understand that, you know, how this process has been run. You can look at the timing of the resignation, the timing of the RTC appointments. You can sit there and look at all of the, the missteps that were, that happened in here related to us trying to get someone appointed, and all of the issues that are out there related to timing, because you, you know, there's been a lot of, of communication that, that. I, I have all these, everything I, so I spent the time and the energy to sit there and document everything. I have all the emails, everything that's there. So everybody can sit there and go through the timing as to what you want. And you can notice that the, the first RTC endorsement was done six days after the resignation. So there was really no effort to sit there and publicize the position and get it out there so that a wide range of people could apply. And we did get a lot of good people that applied, a lot of good people, and a lot of people I voted for, a lot of Republicans, as I've said before. So, um, letting everybody know, related to the town clerk's resignation. So the town clerk, item nine, the town clerk did submit a, a notice to the Secretary of State's office, signed by the Assistant Town Clerk. It was filed on the eighteenth of February, a day before the, the petitions were filed. So just to let everybody know, all the communication that was going back and forth, how it is, so just, so I'm, just so we're all clear as to what we're doing and where we're at. And I still just don't agree with the, I still don't agree with the process. There's no process related to this, no rules. This is not following what our charter would, this is not following any standard election. It's just not there. We have to deal with item ten, which is discussion reparting potential employment of Carol Lee in the town clerk's office as an advisor. I'm thinking this is something that we should waive until we sit there and get our new member appointed or elected, because this is going to be an issue related to the entire town. Back when I first got engaged within the town in two thousand and fifteen, we had multiple members in the Board of Selectmen that were getting paid. It didn't work out really well for the town at that point in time. If we're gonna sit there and put forth an employment contract for Carol, there's got to be limitations in it, and there's got to be a timeline. So I'm just letting everybody know that, I don't expect us to do a contract with her today. Eric had initially wanted to do the contract, and I told him it was not his responsibility to sit there and do that contract. So we need to sit there and, uh, deal with that. So, um, again, I skipped this one, I skipped the resignation, so, um, I skipped this one, this is, but this is for everybody there. If they want any of the documentation, any of the emails, I'd be sure to provide them.
Jeff, I'm not meaning to interrupt here, but what's your point, what's your point here?
Oh, I just want to make sure everybody in town understands this, Jeff, because there's certain information that's being presented out there that Scott and I are unwilling to compromise, are unwilling to vote for qualified candidates. It's just, the problem, Jeff, is that we just have not voted for the Republican town committee endorsed candidates.
That's, that's understood, and the Board of Selectmen has not in six months decided on a candidate.
Yeah, have not. I wanted everybody to understand, because.
So then, so then, so then, can you please let me finish, please? Can you please let me finish? So please don't interrupt me. I mean, we spent six months trying to find a candidate. I mean, the town, and the, and the residents in this town have took it upon themselves to get this petition together, and they want to select the next debate, they want to select the vacancy, they want to select that person. And they have the right to do that, and I want to give them that right. And I just don't see where this is going, and what's your point on this whole?
That's okay. Good, so I wanted to sit there and let everybody know that, uh, uh, these are the various votes that we took, and the various nominations are there. You can sit there and see who nominated who, who voted yes. I should have really put up the, the Jeff Murray Republican, I should have put Republican, Democrat, Democrat, Democrat. So in, in all of these cases, you know, Jeff would vote yes, Anne would vote yes, Scott and I would vote no. And then the next one would come around, Joe Godwin was a qualified candidate, Jeff voted no, Anne voted no, I voted yes, Scott voted yes. So on down the line, so we postponed the meeting because we didn't want the November vote, because we didn't want to know that Alicia Lee was on the, on the ballot or the Republican endorsed candidate before the election, so that occurred. Then we got to the December, we voted, Alicia went up, and this is the one that really bothers me. You know, Alicia, you know, we were, we were working through Jeff Murray, and Jeff Murray didn't want to revote on anyone that was there. So he endorsed, he nominated Alicia Lee, the vote went yes, yes, no, no. And then he nominated Beeta Gudomski, another Republican, he voted no, Anne voted no, Scott and I voted yes to try to get it. So in all of these cases, in the way that this all worked out, I have voted for as many Republicans as Jeff Murray has voted for, so just.
Let me interrupt, just let me interrupt again. What, what is the point of all this?
It's just letting the public know, Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, this is.
The information, this is a public forum, and this is what we're doing.
I know, but this has been out there for, everybody's been attending these meetings, they know what's happening. Why are we questioning this?
Because, because.
What's your point?
Even when we sit there and look at the River East, it doesn't have it correct, because the issue in the River East is that Scott and I are just stonewalling this, which the answer is not. We're not stonewalling anything, we voted yes for people. We voted yes for.
And then that's your point, but now we're gonna have an election and it's gonna be decided, so let's just move on.
We'll move on, so, um, so we also have, still in the process, we have a vacant position. And we had a candidate that wanted to sit there and fill the position. And I believe that it's appropriate that we sit there and give that individual an opportunity. And if Kathy DeRozers is available, Kathy, if you would like to sit there and speak, you can. If you choose not to, I totally.
Interrupt again, Jeff, did we advertise for this?
Yes, we've advertised, remember, Jeff, we've been advertising for six months.
Well, we have an election now, and this, even if we appointed anybody tonight, it's gonna be over, it's gonna be overruled on April eleventh with the news.
Okay, so, let's do it.
Hi.
No. I'm, I'm not gonna vote, I'm gonna be a no vote, because I'm gonna wait for the election.
I understand, Jeff, I expected.
Kathleen DeRozers wants to, if Kathleen DeRozers wants to run for that spot, she can petition on.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. So, um, just threw my hat in for this position, since three times this board has denied three different, or many candidates, but three different meetings where people were not voted in. So I decided, you know, I have the experience. I have been on the Board of Selectmen for eight years, served on the Board of Finance between clerking and chairing the board and being a member for twenty years. I understand the process, I can figure out the mill rate. Done a lot of, I, I am a registered Republican, lived in town forty years, and just thought I would, you know, be a candidate that maybe these, all four of you could somehow agree on. I can see that will never be the point that you're at, at this meeting tonight. It's, it's a sad, a sad point, but it is where you are. So currently, I serve as the Chairperson for the Board of Library and also on beautification. Again, I was just, threw my hat in the ring here to help, this is a two-year, I believe that's left on this position, and just trying to make a smooth transition before this got out of control, the way it has mushroomed into, you know, a political nightmare for the town and the taxpayer. So, but with that, I, I do understand where everybody's coming from. I do wish you the best if, you know, you, you need anything, any consideration, any, anything done on the board, I would be more than happy to help out. I also, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we went through the whole practice, and I know Dennis is, I can see Dennis is on this now, of getting the town administrator, which was a big deal, and it, you can see now that we were able to move the town from Board of Selectmen to having a town administrator work with the Board of Selectmen, how valuable that position was and is. I mean, you know, the work that the town administrator does is amazing, and the money he brings in, thirteen point eight million. We have bridges that, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, you know, weren't looked at. Public Works was not a priority, the roads were not a priority, the equipment was allowed to, you know, we, we had equipment they were repairing, fixing more than it was even being used at the time. So this board was a really good, healthy board. But now with the, the divide that you have, it has really, you know, you've created a big, um, a big problem in town, so that's unfortunate. But again, I sent this in for a two-year time period that Paula, you know, when she left, there was two years left. That's why I did this. I was hoping to be able to bridge this, rather than create the issues that have been created. So, um, thank you for your time, and, you know, I do wish you all the best. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Kathy? Kathy, I have one for you. Kathy, did you ever go to the RTC and ask to be endorsed?
I did, and the RTC will not endorse me. I was, I have been told that I am considered a spender, which was very, very insulting and hurtful, because I voted for, on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, we had a town meeting regarding a tractor that was ahead of, I think it was a, a year ahead of the timeline that Public Works brought before the town at Mo's, and, um, anyways, there were seventy-six people in attendance at that meeting, and forty-two people voted yes for that tractor. It's not Kathy DeRozers' tractor, but it's forty-two people out of seventy-six that agreed after listening to the Public Works' citation that this tractor was necessary. Plus, because we bought it a year early, it saved the town thirty thousand dollars. I don't consider that a spender, I consider that a good decision.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, I'm gonna nominate Kathy DeRozers for the position of a selectman on our board.
This is to fill the role till April eleventh, correct?
Uh, depending upon where we're at, so.
Well, that's according to the state statute.
Okay, then if that's the state statute, and that's what happens, well, let's fill the position.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I'm waiting for the election, if she wants to petition on, she can.
Definitely. She's welcome to petition.
I love it. All right, so that is, uh, what we're trying to deal with for the public, so that you can all understand what we're dealing with. All right.
Jeff, can you please explain to that? Because I'm waiting for the election, I'm gonna let the public decide who our next selectman is. And I really don't appreciate your comments.
Jeff, that's why we differ, I am sitting there.
But Jeff, we can disagree, but you, I don't now like the snide comments. It's, it's not appropriate.
Okay. So the snide comment that this is what we deal with is a snide comment, I think it's actually the truth. I'm sitting there expressing to the community the truth of what I've had to deal with for this period of time, and what the rest of you all have had to deal with in our different ways. We have differing opinions and where we're at, so.
No, 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 Jeff, not interrupting, but, so, do you have a problem with letting the public, the residents of this town, decide who our next select person is?
You know, I don't, Jeff, and to be really honest, I had told Scott that we should all go and we should all have an election, elect the entire Board of Selectmen. Let's reelect the entire Board of Selectmen right now, let's do it right, let's do it in accordance with our charter. I will submit to that, Jeff. Jeff, the way that I look at it, Scott was the highest vote getter on our board, I was second. Paula was third, you were fourth, Anne was fifth, I'll take my chances, the public voted for Scott and I. You know, we're not sitting here trying to be, you know, a problem. I would sit there and I will flat out tell you, we want to sit there and come to a resolution and a process that, that gets us all on a, on a ballot, and we all have an election, have at it. Because I don't, Jeff, Jeff, I don't represent, I don't, I, I represent everybody, but I'm not really considering the people at the, the far left and the far right that deal with us. I'm dealing with the eighteen hundred people in the middle and the positive things we've done for this community.
Yes, Jeff.
Really want to talk about fair, that's fair.
Hundred people want to, they want an election and they want to vote.
I'm okay, I'll put, do it, let's put us all on it.
And, and I just don't understand, I, and, and I'm gonna say this right now, I just don't understand what this witch hunt against Carol Lee you have going on.
It's not a witch.
It is, Jeff, Jeff, you're going around.
Mary, you have had a plan related to this person since it became available. Within six days, you put someone forth there. Anne Kremay has a plan, she has, she, her, her whole situation is, is dealt with related to the Board of Education and the Chairpeople of the, the DTC. I mean, Jeff, I'm just telling you, I sit there and I have a conversation with Anne Kremay, and within five minutes, a text goes back to Scott Person, telling Scott Person not to, not to vote for a potential candidate for, for the, the, the Republican, Beata Gudomski. That's what the email came back in, and you know what that person said in the text? That person said, hey, Scott, you shouldn't vote for Beata, because she's, she's got kids in the school, that she's a PTA mom, that she won't, she will cause problems with the community because of the budget for the school board. That is unacceptable to me. And if anybody would like to see the text, I will gladly show you. Because that's, that's the stuff that bothers me, this whole thing is, is not, is a, is a plan from the get-go.
It is not a plan.
This is Washington DC and Android, that's what it is, Jeffrey, Washington.
This is why, this is wide open, it's wide open and transparent, Jeff.
It has lacked transparency since the get-go. You never even came and spoke to me one time, every person I brought you, Jeff Murray, every person I brought you, you sat there and said, they're too close to you. What does that mean, too close to me?
It is because, do you know why? This is why I'm supporting Carol, and you want to know why I'm supporting Carol?
Why?
Carol has the support of Democrats, she has the support of unaffiliated voters, and she has the support of Republicans. If you talk to anybody about Carol, Carol is very neutral, Carol listens to people, and Carol is very understanding, and she will make good decisions for this town. She's been in this town for a long time, and what you have done to her, and the way you have tried to basically target her, is just, it's, it's almost like bullying, Jeff.
Oh, my God, you're talking about bullying.
We need to stop.
Talking about bullying.
Stop.
Talk about bullying, okay, so.
Jeff, I haven't bullied anybody, I've been pulling, I've been pulling for a fair, transparent election ever since we hit a stalemate after the third time.
Okay.
That's my position.
That's your position, okay, and I understand, Jeff, that I sit there and I look at it in a, in a very simple way. You knew that Mr. King would have trouble getting on the board, you were mad at me for not voting for Mr. King.
And Jeff, Jeff.
Understood, I'm gonna relitigate all of them.
Oh, Jeff, let me stop, I wasn't even at. Oh, Jeff, let me stop. I wasn't even at the RTC when they endorsed Stephen King.
Please, you keep saying stuff like that. You're pulling all those things. How many people are on the Republican Town Committee?
It, it wasn't my vote. I was.
How many people are on the Republican Town Committee when this all started?
We have a lot of new members, so I don't know.
We added new members. We added new members. Okay. Did you add Kathleen DeRozier?
No, we did not. And that was.
Why not?
Because it was, it was a vote because she was not, people didn't want her on the board.
Do you know that Kathleen DeRozier's in the two thousand and, and fifteen election was the highest vote getter?
That's fine. And she can petition on in this election if she would like.
Okay.
The RTC, the RTC, it was, I'm just, and just, and Jeff, just like you said earlier, I am just one vote of many.
Understood.
And she was, by, by majority, she was not voted on.
Well, you know, I, I sit there.
Jeff McGuire, I would like to say something about the RTC. I'm the chairman.
Listen, listen, Carol, would you like to speak at the end of the meeting?
No, you, you.
Carol, please.
Jeff, if you're gonna attack the RTC, she should speak. She's the chair.
I, I asked you one question. How many people are on the RTC? I didn't attack the RTC. I asked you how many.
Let Carol answer that then, please.
I'm asking you, Jeff. This is not an open public discussion.
Carol Lee is the chairman. Carol Lee knows who the exact.
Carol Lee is not the chairman of the RTC. She's part of the RTC.
Carol Bump.
Yeah.
All right, I misspoke.
She can, she can talk, she can talk and public speak. That's how it works. So, okay. So let's move on.
Let's move on, let's move on then, please.
Okay. All right. Old business, uh, item A, Community Center Signers Discussion. Has been too many things going on. I haven't gotten to it. I apologize. Uh, thirteen B, Discussion of Blight and Level of Involvement. Uh, let me sit there and get to that information on the packet. Here we go. Level of Involvement and Blight. Anyone have any questions? Jeff, you wanted to talk about the Long Hill property.
Yeah, it just seems we kind of hit a stalemate with that. It seems like it's, uh, the, whoever purchased it gutted the property. It's just a stone shell right now. There's brush, there's a trailer, there's, they basically left a mess and it doesn't seem like anything's been going on for the last six to eight months. So we really need to get after that, that property owner and get that property cleaned up. It's just a complete eyesore.
Which one is it? One seventeen or one, two forty-eight, two forty-three?
Forty-three.
Two forty-three.
All right, when Eric returns, we will sit there and make that request, sit there and have him try to move that along with the zoning and blight enforcement officer.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, item thirteen C, Solar at AES. That is on our agenda for um, the town meeting. Uh, there is one thing related to the solar at AES. I believe that um, I believe that the contract was signed by the Board of Education already, which it shouldn't have been. So there has to be some amendment to that contract. So if nobody in the, uh, nobody on the Board of Minds, I will sit there and, and request that something be drafted related to the town attorney so that can get done. Again, and then we really need to take into account the issues that Adrian addressed. And is Adrian still on the phone? Uh, just simply because he was involved in that uh, issue. We need the warranty. And I don't know if Eric's ever provided the warranty to the solar contractor. Anybody on this call know that?
Adrian, are you still on the call?
He may not have the, that, we'll get him later, Scott. But does anyone, any of the board members know if Eric provided the warranty?
No, not that I'm aware of. I would have seen it.
Yep. Okay, I didn't see it.
And I, that comment that Adrian had about an RFP, I mean, it's not, it didn't go out to uh, a bid or anything like that because it was a grant. And it's not costing the school or the town anything. So that's why there was no RFP. They didn't hire anybody. So that was the correction I wanted to make.
Correction, okay.
What, what is the purchasing policy? Is, does this follow the purchasing policy? That's all I'd ask.
Well, nothing being purchased.
Well, there is a lot, there is a capital liability on this, so we need to put a dollar number on it and figure out where it falls above the waterline or below the waterline as a capital purchase. Because if, I mean, the, the penalties for the, if we default on it, the penalties that we cancel this contract are quite high. So that's one, that's one concern I have.
I mean, what Adrian brought, what, what Adrian brought up to me, the one thing that I sat there and I, besides the warranty issue and paying ten percent extra, so an extra forty thousand dollars to get a fifty-year warranty, which is one part, but the other part that he sat there and said, and, and Jeff, you, you and, and Dennis had a meeting with soul, with the gentleman. Is this project gonna produce more um, more power that we should be dispersing across the town? I mean, at least across the, the, the parking lot to the community center and to the town hall?
Well, per the. One and a half times.
Per, per the meeting, no. But Adrian says it's.
One and a half times.
So, we probably need to get that nailed down before Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
That and the roof, in the roof warranty, need to figure that out. I would hate to void that warranty.
Right.
I mean, I, I just heard about this just now, so this is, this is all news to me.
New to me. I mean, so, but Adrian was on the, you know, I believe at that point in time, you and Adrian were on the Board of Finance and he was engaged as, you know, he was almost the clerk of the works on that project. So he was, he was heavily engaged in it. So um, we'll get with him later and actually try to find that warranty so we can understand what's up.
And there still isn't anything about how that's gonna be attached to the roof, if it's ballasted or, you know, how it's gonna be attached yet on, on contract.
No, we'll, we'll have to sit there. There's, there's, there's a tremendous amount of issues that we need to deal with related to that.
And if that's, if that's not even on there, how could they come up with a contract price?
Well, my whole thing is, I know they need the warranty. I know that I have asked Eric to provide that to the Chairperson of the, the Board of Education so that she could provide it back to the contractor because that's a big issue related to them. But we got, we're gonna have to get that warranty in the next couple of days. So. All right, uh, the kitchen, uh, in our packet, there's, there's information on page. I, sorry. Too many computers. What page is those quotes? So Eric basically is asking us to approve the twenty thousand dollars for the kitchen for the quotes that were provided. And there's one quote from uh, uh, the.
Kelly for debt.
Kelly, Kelly for debt. So there is a Kelly for debt quote that, you know, with some additions, is gonna end up even about eighteen thousand. And these are the cabinets, but so um, this would go into the fire department. So plus labor, eighteen thousand, seven seventy-four. So Jeff, you had asked for three quotes when this came up first time. Do you have any problem with any of the quotes that were provided and what we should sit there and authorize Eric to sit there and spend related to this?
I'm taking, I'm taking a look right now. I know you had your screen shared before, but I'm trying to scroll through now and catch up here where we're.
Page thirty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So thirty-three, it starts at page thirty-one.
It looks like everything was pretty much competitive bid for, for like items.
Yep.
I'm just wondering why we're going with Kelly for debt since they're the highest, the highest of the three.
I think Kelly for debt actually revised back down here to.
Okay, I'm just looking at the top. I'm looking at.
Yeah, no, no problem. I, I, I'm with you because I didn't see the thousand dollars that he referenced, but on page thirty-three, uh, it adds the labor and a reduction in the cabinets and the granite.
Why is there tax in it?
There should be no tax municipal.
That'll come off.
No, that's a different total. So eleven thousand, eight twenty-three fifty-nine plus sixty-two hundred for labor is eighteen thousand, oh, twenty-three fifty-nine. So math didn't even work.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if these other ones include tax or not. I mean, that's still significantly higher than Dean Cavendry or the law lards.
Well, the one question I have, and I'm assuming that this is internal labor. I don't know who's doing the labor. Is Kelly for debt doing the install?
I would assume so. They probably have some carpenters. They probably have some carpenters on the contract. They'll probably do it. For them.
But up at the top, it says labor prices include removal and installation from Economy Home Improvements. Maybe that's who's doing the installation. I don't know who that is, Economy Home Improvements.
Well, do we have a problem with the giving them a range that you want them to hit?
Yeah.
I mean, because I know the Fire Commission has come to us multiple times on this and we said the last time they were asking for a base number and then on the last time we sat there and said, get three quotes. So they've gotten three quotes on the cost of a hardener, but for some reason, Kelly.
All lards, they have the smooth style door where they have the shaker style. Those are like cabinets. And I'm just wondering why Dean wasn't selected because Dean has a much lower labor charge and.
Why, why is it on the one sheet says sixty-two hundred for labor and the other one it's all four thousand, thirty-six hundred and four thousand?
That's where I'm confused.
Either quotes the install and no removal or what'd they do?
Hmm.
So um, it's March, so we still have another month to deal with this if we choose to. If we have more questions than we ask, we may as well have Eric do that when he gets back and sit there and deal with this later.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I wouldn't, I would say we wouldn't go with Dean is because they did have a fire in their facility.
Right.
Um, then they may not be able to, that, that may be something Eric can answer. They may not be able to honor the timeline that we're looking for and that's why he's going with Kelly for debt. Because I would, I would go between those two because those two are like, they're, they're pricing like items.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we'll push that. What was one of the four that Eric wants? We'll put that on uh, an agenda. And if we need to move forward faster, we can sit there and do something by email because it is in the range that they spoke about when they first came to us.
Yes.
It's just a question of if everybody's happy with the, especially the labor dollars. That's the one question for me. So. Okay, uh, let's move on to item fourteen, which is new business. Trinity Solar Vendor Application. That is on page thirty-nine. Does anybody have a problem with that? I know that um, we've had, it's not really a concern with the solar company, but we had some uh, emails from residents related to, I believe, Frontier. But does anybody have a problem with the application and approving the application for Trinity Solar? They've had one in town before. We've approved this probably six months ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
All their people have been very good.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion that we approve the Trinity Solar LLC Vendor Application for Vendor License. Anne Kremay has seconded. All those, uh, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item fourteen B, Bill seven oh six seven, Change to the Motor Vehicle Assessment. This is slightly complicated, but starting on page forty-one, we have an ability to approve a lower valuation rate on the, let's share my screen. Where is it? Share. So this is the page that um, relates to this bill. So what Eric did is they shoved this in a really interesting bill, if you read the whole thing. Healthcare, but basically what the state's doing is they're basically saying we could use uh, an eighty-five percent rate uh, for year one and that would be the assessed value of a car. Or we can come down and we can use ninety percent of the rate. And so what Eric's expressing to us, and he expressed in his report, is there's a shift of about one point some odd million dollars in total valuation. I mean, just from a simple standpoint, in my head, I sit there and think we go, because what's gonna happen? Is it decreases five percent every year or a twenty-year cycle? It gets down to, I believe, the end of this is, sorry, it's a not less than five hundred dollars. So um, so years fifteen to nineteen, it's twenty percent and anything beyond year uh, twenty is five hundred dollars or in that, not less than five hundred dollars. I would sit there and say we go with a higher valuation and simply because the math is gonna tell us that if you have a motor vehicle and we have a higher value on the motor vehicle, that means the home values within town um, are going to get, we're gonna end up having home values potentially get taxed at a higher rate because the state is gonna limit the, the taxable rate that we can, the mill rate that we can have. So I mean, after reading this, my recommendation is that we just go with the higher ninety, start at the ninety percent threshold uh, rather than the eighty-five percent threshold. Anybody read this? Anybody have any issues?
And then our grant list is gonna go back up again.
It's gonna be a slightly higher, yes.
Yep.
Anybody? Any issues related to this?
That's one of the ones you have to sign?
Um, I'm not necessarily sure. It's the one I have to sign. I think what we need to do is we need to pick one of these. And so you can, we can pick the eighty-five percent start or we can pick the ninety percent start. We pick the ninety percent start, that's what the town will follow moving forward. The assessor's office will have that into its equation and when um, my family receives its tax bill for uh, its vehicles, it'll be in accordance with this percentage rates. So. Okay, if nobody's gonna sit there, I'm gonna sit there and tell you. Go ahead.
I thought there was something with the, that we were limited now at what the mill rate could be for cars or something like that.
Correct.
So this helps to offset that a little bit. If we take the ninety, it'll be closer to what it had been. Is that what it would be? The final taxes or not?
Nope. It just means that, you know, we would potentially have a higher tax base to be taxed at the standard rate that the state is limiting for motor vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
Taking it from one place and giving it to its back another.
Yeah, I get it.
And our problem with our town is that our tax base is highly residential and homeowners are gonna bear more of the burden rather than people that are dealing with, with cars because of, of these changes and lowering the assessed value and taxing it at a lower rate. Because in this case, this, I think this is the first year, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the first year that our mill rate would potentially be over the threshold for the state. We've actually done a pretty good job of keeping the mill rate lower than the maximum motor vehicle tax rate. I do think this. motor vehicle tax rate. I do think this year, because of the changes related to this and because of the changes related to the veteran tax exemptions and other items that we're gonna cars or will be taxed at a different mill rate than our homes.
Correct.
Do we know what, do we know what the average age of the automobiles are in town? What the breakdown is?
I don't know, Jeff, and I don't know that the town assessor has ever provided that to us.
Because I don't see everybody driving around in brand new twenty twenty-five vehicles, so. You know, I just wonder if we fall in the, you know, the, the last, you know, the year ten to year twenty uh, with most vehicles. So when you get down in that in the weeds, it's, it's not, it's not much of a difference.
No, none of it, none of it is a difference. It's just when you have the, the difference.
Five percent. It's an offset of five percent across the board.
Five percent, yeah, that's all. Okay.
I, I just, I would be curious how this changes. Each one changes what we're paying now versus what we're paying with, how this would change. As far as revenue.
For the residents that have homes and cars, you would want, you would want the more tax generation off of the vehicles because there's that's what you need. So to offset it's the homeowner taxes. You need more vehicle taxes.
Look, you're going to pay it no matter what.
Yeah, no matter what. I mean, I, I realize my family's paying a lot and we're going to keep paying a lot regardless of this. It's just in my head, you may as well take the higher threshold and move on because.
Well, that person is going to penalize his renters.
It's gonna, just people who just have cars.
Or renters.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we go with the the motor vehicle assessment that has a starting threshold of ninety percent.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion related to this anymore? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All those that abstained?
I'm going to abstain because I'd like to get some more information about this before I vote on it.
Okay, so Anne, did you vote?
Yes.
And did you vote yes?
Yes.
So the vote was three zero one. Okay. Item fourteen C, the A, the A H M budget. Um, first thing that we need to do is appoint, and Anne, you're, you're you're okay being appointed to the, the A H M representative?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Anne Kremay uh, as the Andover Board of Selectmen A H M representative. And a second?
Second.
Jeff Murray seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So that's. Anne, did you vote yes on that?
Yes, I did.
So four nothing. I'm, I, I can't see everybody because I'm sharing my screen, so I apologize. I gotta hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right. And Jeff was the only one that was in my ribbon on the top, so. Um, so Anne has been appointed that the Andover Board of Selectmen A H M representative for uh, moving forward and that vote was for nothing. In our packet, there was the A H M budget. These pages. This page specifically gives the increase for the town. If I remember correctly from looking at what we were doing, so Andover's increase is four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. For a total of one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. And if I, if I understood what I, you know, I believe, and Anne, correct me if I'm wrong, A H M provides services not only to the community, but also to the school, and those are incorporated within those dollars. I believe also their school actually pays them additional funding. If I read it correctly, I read it somewhere.
Yeah.
So A H M covers some of our social, um, our social requirements, estate requirements, uh, that the town is.
Right.
Has to be, has to deal with. So obviously, it's an additional four hundred, there are four thousand dollars, but the total for the town this year will be a hundred and six nine fifty-three. Anybody have any discussion related to A H M and the services provided? Okay. Then I make a motion that we approve the A H M budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year at a hun- one hundred six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, subject to the Board of Finance approval.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jeff Murray. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Right, four nothing. That vote passes. Okay. Item fourteen D, approve expenditures for Bunker Hill Bridge Project and Culvert Fund. What Eric is asking us is because we had uh, looked at potentially getting a line of credit from one of the banks, and we couldn't sit there and do that effectively. We had to sit there and bond for it, and it was going to cost us a significant amount of money. We have approximately a million dollars in those two funds. And what Eric is asking is for permission to use those dollars to pay for services for the contractors as they get done. And then as we're reimbursed from the state and the federal government related to this bridge project, that he reimburses those funds and sits there and utilizes our current resources to manage the bridge project. So that's the story on what he's asking us for. Does anyone have any concerns? I will tell you, my biggest concern is just the funding from the federal government. And the expectation really is that we will get, that everything will get funded. At least the state would understand it. I know the contractor would understand it. Um, and everybody's got to be sitting there feeling a slight bit of pressure related to how this is moving about, but if we want to move forward with that bridge project, this is probably our easiest solution to funding it, uh, to funding it. Anybody have any issues?
No.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to to authorize the town administrator to utilize the Bunker Hill Bridge Project Fund and the Culvert Fund to uh, utilize as seed funding for the Bunker Hill Bridge Project.
I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay. Further discussion, maybe, because this is actually a pretty, this is a pretty big deal.
Pretty big deal.
I mean, I don't want anyone to be under the impression that this is not, um, you know, we're doing this to avoid spending additional dollars uh, in interest and in bonding. But if the federal funding and the state funding don't come timely, what's going to happen? And as I told Eric, there will be a pause in the brisk, bridge construction until funding resumes or funding is, is received. So we will not continue to move dollars out if we don't receive funding. So I've tried to express that to Eric, that that's the way that I believe that we would proceed. That's not a good choice, and it's not really, it's, it's creating a lot of uncertainty from my end, but we need to get that bridge done. So, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, four nothing. Okay, um, item fourteen E, Senior Transportation Grant Application Approval, whatever that's, um. So on the page.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two? Fifty-two. There you go. My bad. I forgot I had it there. So this is what Eric is asking us to approve. So in the past, this grant application process has been uh, performed by Kathy Palazzi, and we have been successful on numerous grant applications. This grant application and most grants that they're going now is required twenty percent funding. So if we are successful in getting the grant, we would have to go to town meeting to get it approved. But Eric is just asking us for, asking the board for permission to apply. Anybody?
Just, I just have one question. When, when Kathy was applying for these, was Kathy signing them or was it Eric?
Uh, I believe it was Eric in the end. I believe in the beginning Kathy was signing them herself.
Okay.
And then I believe it transitioned when Eric became town administrator and eventually transitioned to Eric signing them.
Okay. I mean, I, my personal opinion is I would like to see our town administrator as the, this, this is nothing against Tess, but I'd like to see our town administrator signing and, and overseeing all our grants.
I think what happens, I mean, this is just me, is the grant application process, he's, he's basically saying, can she apply for it? And then she would go back with the paperwork and give it to the appropriate person. In most of these cases, it's, it's either the chief executive of the town and some, some require the first selectman to sign, which I, I sign when Eric requires. And Eric can sign on some of them, but I think he's just saying.
No, that's not right, Jeff. I, I signed it only, only as the person doing the grant. Creating the grant for the town. Then Eric, before Eric, it was Bob Burbank. And then, I mean, after him, oh, no, wait, that was Joe Higgins. They were the ones that signed it. The official signature, correct.
Okay.
Just, just as Eric is the office, you know, the, the, the manager of the town, I would, I would prefer he be the point of contact for all grants going forward.
Yeah, that'd be good. Eric.
We've had a lot of success with Kathy Palazzi being the point person in that program, just to let everybody know.
Point of order.
Um, who was trying to speak?
That's Tess Kraus.
Yes.
Yeah, um, Jeff McGuire, I have, I have no problem with Eric overseeing that. Um, again, I am new to grant writing, and so this would be my first grant writing, and so absolutely. Um, I, I think that Eric should oversee that and every step of the way, I, I think that that would be a good guideline.
Okay.
Thank you, Tess.
Absolutely. Should be signed by the town administrator. Approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we're ready to approve this? Anybody have a problem with it?
Yeah, we just replaced Tess with Eric Anderson, Town Administrator.
So I do, I do have a question in that, if, if I may. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, being though that I'm filling out all the paperwork, Eric would be signing it, so that would be, he would be overseeing everything. So correct me if I'm wrong, I'm preparing all the documents, he's overseeing it, signing it, and then we're going forward, correct? To see that we're all under the same agreement. Okay.
He's reviewing and signing.
Very good.
Okay.
So um, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm missing something. I thought as of a few weeks ago, we were repairing the van. Or is it now, I mean, how long would it be taking to get a replacement? Are we doing this because we figure in a few years we need a replacement or?
Right, that's, that's when we'll be receiving this. If we get approved by this, for this grant, that's when we will be receiving it. The last one took, the last one took, I think, three years.
We should be applying for every op, every grant opportunity that's out there, especially related to senior transportation and any senior issue because our population is aging. So
Sure.
This is not related to the repair or the work that we sat there and discussed on the current van and the current vehicle. This is a grant that's available that the town should be applying for to, to
Okay.
Take advantage of every dollar that we possibly can get that doesn't help the residential local taxpayers.
Okay, so this is not uh, because we had problems with the last one just last month. This just was a grant that happened to be coming along at this time, so we're going for that. Is that right?
Correct, correct.
Can, can I clarify that?
Sure.
Um, any, any vehicle that is at a certain date that is outdated, so to speak, by the state, um, we can apply for a grant to replace that vehicle, and that's what we would like to do, regardless of if it has current problems or not. Um, that is a benefit to us actually, but um, yes, this is to replace um, that outdated vehicle, which is the van, which is in need of desperate repair.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and if we do repair it and it stays in service for a while, then we keep using it till it, you know, we hit end of life.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize the grant application for the Senior Transportation Traditional Capital Grant to be prepared by the Senior Center Coordinator and overseen and signed by the town administrator.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Can, can I just interrupt? So sorry.
Sure.
You said senior coordinator, that would be the senior director.
Senior director.
It's clarification.
So our minute writers, please change it from coordinator to director.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, we have an event, we have two multiple event permits in for the property down on um, Route Six, um, one thirty-one Route Six, the uh, I forgot the name of the tavern. Scott, what was the name of that tavern originally? White's?
Yeah.
Tavern.
White's Tavern, right?
It's Tavern, uh, right across the street from the um, Andover.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's two different dates. Does anybody have an issue with authorizing the permit? It's, it's stated for, you know, somewhere between eighty and a hundred people for both events. Parking on Hutchinson Road.
April twelfth and May seventeenth.
Anybody?
Nope, they weren't on time, so. And everybody's approved, right? The trooper and or is with, we're the first, uh.
We're the first approvals.
We're the first hurdle.
So.
They're on time. They're in on time. It doesn't seem anything unreasonable.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the two permits for the Siri Alanka New Year's Eve, New Year's Celebration and the WISAC Festival uh, to be held April twelfth and May seventeenth.
Okay, I found this on the web, the New Year's Eve New Year's Celebration and the West End Festival to be held April twelfth.
Sorry, uh, my phone decided it wanted to give me some AI information on that. Sorry about that. Though again, I'll make a motion to approve the, the two events scheduled for uh, one thirty-one Connecticut Route Six in Andover on May seventeenth and April twelfth, uh, subject to approval by all other relevant public safety officials.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Scott, Jeff, I can't see you.
Aye.
I voted yes.
Okay, so four zero. Okay, so uh, we had uh, uh, an additional item uh, into the agenda, fourteen E, a discussion regarding EV charging. Into the agenda fourteen E, a discussion regarding EV charging stations at the town hall.
So this this kind of came about with a discussion with Eric the other day in his office. About the EV charging station. He stated, we're paying five hundred dollars a year for the billing service for that EV charger. And we're getting zero revenue out of it. And even when it was free, we were getting limited use. So I would like to propose that we cancel that contract and save the town five hundred dollars. A year and just if anybody wants to charge, they can be in in even if people go in and charge. It may end up costing us fifty to a hundred dollars a year, but it's still going to be a savings over what we're doing now. I also saw something from a resident trying to. Set up an account and and the way it's set up now is that barely you have to get town approval to charge there. They tried setting up an account one day to to get their car charged and it was. It was an issue for them. So. I really don't see a high use on that charger. It might be somebody stopping in there once in a while or for a meeting that might plug in or a fire department member. Like I said, it's it's really inexpensive to charge because the current the current levels that we're that that charger's at is relatively low. So. I'd like to suggest that we just take it back to a free charger and and just cancel that contract going forward. And if the if the use goes up, then we we make it a revenue. Based charger again, but I don't see it. Nobody's really using it.
Well, let's make a motion and get that done because that's something that's been brought up before and we should do it.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to cancel the the contract with the EV service for the fee based charging. And and. Take it back to a to a free service.
I'll second that.
And seconded that. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 So four nothing on that one. Okay. Let's move on to item fifteen, Approval of the Minute Meetings. The special meet minute meetings for two, three. I you know, I know we tape all these. But I was so let's do this one first because I don't think there's any issues related to this. I really got to ask a question on minute meetings. Do we even need minute meetings? Because we have these all taped and they're all out there, but I believe it's statutory that we need to do it. So. Anyway. I'll make a motion that we approve the two, three, twenty twenty-five special minute meetings.
Special meeting minutes.
Special meeting minutes. Special meeting blah, blah, blah. Sorry. Special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jeff, I'm assuming that was a yes.
That was a yes.
Okay. On this next one. I do have a couple of changes because I read these. And. So. Well, maybe it's not this one. Do we have a third one here? Really?
February tenth meeting.
Yeah. Sorry, that's on that starts on page sixty-two. Yeah, there was an extra set of minutes there for some reason. Why was that? We gotta look now. So we had a special meeting February tenth. And we had. A special meeting the third, but those are not on here. So we had the third and we have the tenth. And so we don't even have on the agenda the other one. Okay, that's a problem. That's why I was having a breakdown. I was remembering different motions and different items carried. So let's just look at that one. That was related to that. Yeah.
Thought a correction needed on page two. Under seven C.
No, see, you're dealing with you're dealing with the minutes, the regular minutes.
Regular meeting minutes that you've got up there now.
I know. We don't have that. I have a problem with that one as well. So so now I'm just telling you, I think we should approve these, but we have to add us. We have this is we did a budget meeting before that meeting.
That's right.
So I'm starting on page sixty. There's a set of minutes and those minutes were related to. Those minutes were related to what we were passing forth to the Board of Finance. So. I'll make a motion that we approve the special meeting budget workshop minutes for Monday, February tenth.
Okay.
And then. And I'm going to recommend that we bring this February tenth regular minutes because they're not on the agenda and we didn't make any changes to them. That we bring this to the next meeting and I agree with you. There are certain votes, which is mentally a problem for me, like how the votes. Were done incorrectly. By. The person writing this. And I asked Eric that when I had I first got the packet and I went to him because if you can, you know, you got a six B. The information there. Six B. Right? Yeah, there's a vote and that vote was incorrect. And then the vote on. Seven is incorrect. And. You know. I know we do these things on on video and everything is. Here for posterity because it's recorded, but. I just tell you, the votes were wrong and I I had a problem with that when I was reading them, but we're going to bring this one to our next meeting.
Okay.
Because it's not on here. Okay, so then we go on through some reports. So we have our treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions or want to bring any concerns related to what's going on in the treasurer's office forward?
I saw a letter that she had submitted in there.
That this is on the tax collector. So we have so so we didn't get everything that we had from the the treasurer's office, but I know they're they're dealing with other issues. They provided us the tax register, the check register. So this is a tax collector's report. That was provided. So in the in the month of February, we collected two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And. And Kate sat there and told us that this was not updated in her in the information that she provided because she didn't get all the way through the end of the. Cycle before she went away on big time off. So. Right. So this is her letter related to that.
Right.
Okay. And then she did send us a letter that we should all read related to the Hop River Homes. Tax abatement. I don't believe we we want to sit there and make any decisions on this tonight, but we want to know that this is out there and that we should address it. Anybody have any problems with that?
I can remember one time being at a town meeting where we had to vote to do with this. Abatement, tax abatement. So would we have to do a town meeting again to change that?
We probably should. We have to evaluate it. And honestly, I mean, she brings up some some points that we're not utilizing. Field, it would be better to utilize the field. And she's also bringing up some points that weren't addressed previously that.
Right.
You know, the tax abatement isn't going to have any impact on the residents. It's only going to have an impact on the company that runs the facility. So. It's something we need to address. I know there's people in the community that are very. Engaged with that senior center and and not senior center, but senior housing and. Well, listen, we should evaluate it and make what a decision that's appropriate for the town. So. But that's not for today's meeting. So move this through. So we do have on page. Eighty-four, a set of. Tax refunds, the total sixteen hundred fourteen dollars and sixteen cents. So does anybody have any issues related to those?
Nope.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the tax tax refunds for the month in a total of sixteen hundred fourteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Seconded.
Anne Kremay seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Departmental reports. The assessor's office provided us the grand list. It dropped sixteen, six million dollars. Six million dollars and. Three hundred and fifteen, something along that lines. So. House evaluations are the same. Reasonably the same, actually. No, sorry. Down down four hundred thousand. The car taxes are down six million dollars. And the personal property taxes are up slightly. So total net grand list, and really what we should do is request that the assessor provides us changes on those line items so that everybody can understand them easily without me having to try to do math. But the six million dollar decrease, which means that our mill rate will have to increase to cover the loss in taxable dollars.
Yeah, I wish I would have seen that before I abstained from the motor vehicle tax. That's what I was.
I got it. But we should sit there and ask when he does this in the future is to give us the change so it's easily to understand and the. Members of the board can see it and that the the residents can all see it. So they understand what we're dealing with and what the Board of Finance has to deal with when they. Sit there and deal with the budget and try to come up with a mill rate. So. This was the assessor's office activity report, conveyance fees processed, so on and so forth. It's all available. These are adjustments that are made within the system. So ups and downs and by location. In the month of February, we had a total. Building permits for twenty eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. So a very light permit month and permit dollars. So hopefully that will increase and we'll have some business that. Moves forward. Public Works, does anybody have any comments or concerns on the Public Works report? Register voters is in the packet, process twenty-three voters, annual candidacy voters, Connecticut Secretary State attended the Tolland County ROV. Our Rovac meeting in Wellington. There you go. And that was the last page of our. Packet. So. Anybody have any questions or concerns related to department reports or lack of department reports or anybody have anything they want to bring up? Okay, item nineteen, Correspondence. We didn't have any. One second, I have to stop sharing. There we go. Okay. I get to stop sharing. So there was no correspondence. Now we're going to move on to item twenty and public speak. So we're going to start in the top line, Kimberly Person.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Liz Lowketch.
I'm all I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Kathy and Mike Palazzi.
Nothing. Thank you.
All right, Chris Bernard.
Nothing really, other than to just be clear. I think that the ability to get on the ballot from a write-in perspective is quite easy. I've done it myself. I just decided not to run. I've been asked multiple times to run for Board of Selectmen and I have refused every time because of this. Thank you very much.
Rachel Bowman. Diane Granier.
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Louise Goodwin.
Hi, I just wanted to mention when you were talking about the AHM budget. I'm the representative for the Board of Finance and I already voted and submitted my. Vote after we had a Board of Finance review on it and everyone voted in the Board of Finance. You had mentioned that you'd have to. Send the your vote over to the Board of Finance for consideration. Did I?
If you've already voted on it, it's done because it's past us because you control the money. Eric asked us to vote on it so that we would move it to you.
Okay, because we were I was informed that both the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen has a vote for that. So I think it's done at this point. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Liz Lowketch because she's Board of Finance. She's got her hand up.
Oh, yeah, I I was just going to say, yeah, I I believed that we were entitled to two votes. And Louise did our one and then you guys were.
Okay.
So I would think that you guys would still have a vote, but.
So then we're good to go. So we have the second vote and we approved it and the Board of Finance has approved it. So.
I think so, yeah.
Sounds good with AHM. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen King.
I'd just like to note that I think it's somewhat unfair that you allow certain people to speak and you shut down Carol Barton. I think that speaks to just a hint of your prejudice. And really, again, disappointed in in what happened tonight.
Jerry Kremay.
No, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Kathleen DeRozier.
All set. Thank you.
Bob Hamburger.
Yeah, give me a second. I made some notes here. This is something that's really more to the Board of Ed, but since it was brought up here, I just want to enter it into the record in context. Adrian mentioned during the first public speak, the idea that the school administration and the Board of Ed shouldn't be running the solar energy project, that. The school building is a town asset and should be dealt with as such by town officials. And I I just want to concur with that notion. And speak to that concern, perhaps within the larger context of other recent years, capital issues like the problems with the schools bathrooms, the parking lot, and of course. The the disputes over the property lines related to the construction of the community center. From my perspective, that last one was a complete train wreck and accomplished nothing except spending something like thirty grand of town funds on needless and ultimately useless legal challenges. Now. I always try to maintain a high level of decorum in public meetings like this, but I don't think there's any diplomatic way to put this. On the one hand, we have town officials and board members with specific and detailed experience in construction, engineering and project management, while the school does not. I mean, Eric Anderson worked for several years directly in the solar energy industry. Jeff Murray is an electrical engineer, somebody who I've worked with and can attest to his competence. School officials and the Board of Ed have demonstrated pretty conclusively that they're not able to effectively manage these capital issues. And they really just need to concede these inabilities in these matters and relinquish the authority to those folks in town who know how to get these things done. Just for context, I make these comments from my own perspective as an advanced degree electrical engineer with forty-three years professional experience. So I didn't just fall off the turnip truck. Don't misunderstand me. It's not that the Board of Ed or the school officials are somehow bad people or nefarious, have nefarious intentions. It's simply that they don't have the professional expertise or the specific domain knowledge to get these capital improvement projects done promptly or efficiently. That's all I had to say for now. Thanks.
Tess Graus.
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Jeff.
Lane Bucher.
Sorry, had a hard time unmuting myself. I just back when you were talking about petition candidates. Being on the ballot is write-ins. And I know I I also was. At that Board of that part of that Board of Selectmen group that went ahead and petitioned to have our names on the ballot. And we were on the ballot. We weren't write-ins. There was a line that said petition candidates. There was the Republican, the Democrat, working families, petition candidates. So our names were there. So I I I have to admit, I do think it's kind of odd that, you know, one one candidate on the ballot and then any of the other people on a write-in list. So. That's all just my opinion on that. Also, I I do hope that at the next meeting, we discuss how we go about getting a new town clerk. Because I know we haven't had spent the time yet to discuss that about whether we have to have a special election. Um, because I know we haven't had spent the time yet to discuss that about whether we have to have a special election for a town clerk. Um, or whether we wait till November to have it part of the November elections, or if it's something that gets appointed um, until there's an election, um, by the board of selectmen. So hopefully that discussion happens, uh, next month. Thanks.
Roberta Darty.
Hi, I just want to be sure that the board of selectmen received my email of letter of interest to the open position of the town clerk. I also wanted to let you know that I have submitted that letter with the town clerk today. So if somebody didn't get that, the town clerk has a copy.
Joanne Hebert.
I am all set. Thank you.
Leann Hutchinson.
No, thank you.
Okay, Marcy Minor.
I'm good, thanks.
Um, Carol Lee, I believe.
All set. Thank you.
Phone number ending in 4766. Okay, Andover Democrats.
I signed in with the wrong account. This is Scott. So yeah, um, and I'd really have nothing to add right now. Thank you.
Allison Kane.
Thank you.
Lauren's iPhone. iPhone 13. Alicia Lee. Okay, did I miss anyone? Because there's a lot of people on this meeting. Okay, if I did not miss anyone, that concludes public speak. I will sit there and make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you.